All in your order, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of the previous meeting. I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Do you have any additions or corrections on the minutes? See, none. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Minutes to approve. Approval of the agenda. I just have a couple things to add. Kelly Spencer's with the Heritage Centers here, so I'd like to quote her right before Kevin, just so she... Okay, she needs to go somewhere. And also then at the end of new business, just a quick discussion about NDACO appointments for their standing boards. I sent an email out on that a little while ago, so just we can talk about that a little bit. Other than that, I have nothing else to add.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended.
Further discussion?
See, none. Oh, yes. The NDACO or the ND County Commissioner Association, you know, they have the standing boards, like the legislative committee and the resolutions, that kind of stuff, just to discuss if we want to put somebody on those again. Oh, yeah, we'll put that down at the bottom under, at the end of new business before visitors and delegations. Okay. See, none. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Kelly, thank you for stopping in to talk about the Heritage Center.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for putting me on the agenda. I am here before I speak to you about the Heritage Center. I've heard rumors that there's been some misunderstanding about what's been going on at the Heritage Center, and so I thought it'd be best just to come and let everybody know what we, some changes that we've made and what our plans are looking forward. So about this time last year, we were operating at a 28,000, our balance was a $28,000 deficit. We had two full-time employees and a part-time janitor. We, in order to manage our budget, we cut back on some of the hours of our employees and our janitor was not happy with that, so he moved on to a different position. Our director took another position in Springfield and moved back to her home state in September. And then in April of this year, we lost our only other full-time staff person, which was Jackie Johnson, our historian. So the board has been looking at doing more event programming and educational and artistic cultural programming for the public. We have found that being a museum has not really brought any public interest to our museum. There's been lots where we've had maybe four visitors to the museum part of it. So rather than continue on the path that we were going down, we decided to revamp and we had reconfigured our main floor space so that it is available for art programming, to have speakers come in and present, to have musicians hold concerts for a smaller venue. I just met this morning with Kristen Cryle, who is part of the North Dakota After School Network, and she has some really good ideas of us being able to work with the school district so we can do some after-school programming. So rather than kids just spending time in the classroom, they would be able to come to the Heritage Center and work on different STEM programs, arts programs, other history-related items. We feel that this is, as a whole board, feel that this is important so that we don't lose the younger generation. We want to get them really interactive with our museum. And we just felt that having this open space is a really good way to meet that goal. We also have hired a part-time director to work with us, Mandy Ricketts, who is originally from Devil's Lake. We'll be starting her first day next Wednesday. Our hours of operation will be noon to five, Wednesday through Friday, and Saturdays, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then we are always open by, if somebody wants to make an appointment, we have a phone number that's posted, so if anybody wants to call and make an appointment, we try to do that and give tours of the museum as requested. I would just like to point out that since we have lost Jackie as our staff person, we have had more activities going on at the museum since the beginning of April until now than we had had in the whole year before that. So our board has really stepped up to take a spot of staff, even though we all have full-time jobs. I guess if there's any questions about the Heritage Center, you guys are a huge part of it in helping us with our day-to-day operation expenses, so I want you to know that, and I think that is important, that you know what's going on at the Heritage Center.
My first concern is the roof. Do you think the roof?
Well, Kevin and...
I bet Kevin got off the job. Nope. Is that right, Kevin?
Brennan Gilbertson and Mike Gilbertson took a look at it, and I guess that's where that is right now.
We don't have an answer on that?
Mike Gilbertson said that he could fix it and that he would fix it, and he is, he works out in Minot. So whenever, but he has a home here, so whenever he is here, he was going to get in contact with us so that they could come and do that work.
Did we get a price?
I don't have a price, no.
Who's in charge of this project, getting that roof fixed? I mean, we first talked about the roof here at the County Commission a year ago last April, is that correct?
Yeah, probably.
So it's been well over a year that this roof has been leaking.
Yep, yep, and it's causing damage.
Lucas did show us a picture, the inside damage. Well, the damage is going to get worse if it just keeps leaking.
Right.
So I think the first thing we've got to get done in that roof fix, because that's a building that we want to keep in good condition for the county, the city, all the people in the Lake Region area, and the viewers. But if we don't keep that roof fixed, or get it fixed, so it don't leak,
Right.
I mean, it's just going to keep costing money.
I actually talked to Stephanie, another one of the board members this morning, and she told me that actually there's quite a bit more damage because of the recent rainfalls. Is that right?
Yep, we've had a pretty, a wet spring, so yeah, we've had a lot of damage. It was before, just on the third level, and it's now starting to affect the second level.
Is there anybody else, Kevin, that you know in town that would be looking at Gilbertson doing that time, or?
No, actually, he was the most willing to do it, too.
You know, I'll follow up with him again. He gave a price. And, do you want me to present that price to the county?
Give it to Kevin. Kevin will know it's reasonable, and if it's reasonable, I'm sure he'll move forward with it on his approval.
All right.
I mean, I have no problem. Let's get it fixed.
All right. I think that's great.
I mean, I'm glad you're doing all this thing of getting you first on as director and talking to the schools about using the facility, and that's great, I guess. But we've got to get that roof fixed.
I agree.
Number one.
I agree. Yes, yes, they absolutely do.
It's going to be probably unrepairable for it, and we don't need to fix this up. So I'm very concerned about that. I wouldn't, we wouldn't let another building that the county owns leak like that if we weren't as a commission. I know we weren't. So let's get that fixed.
Okay.
Can Kevin help you with that?
Yeah, yeah. We've been in contact over it, so, yeah. We've also been working with Mary Lynde to see if there's any grant funding available, so.
Well, at one time, you didn't think this was going to be too big a job, was it?
Yeah, well, the comment he made was if it was something simple, he would just fix it for nothing, but it turned out it was more than something simple, so we haven't seen a price yet, I guess.
The rubber is falling away underneath the copper. So it's not that we have to replace the copper, it's just that we need to replace that rubber that runs around the whole.
It's good to done. That's all I'm concerned about. I mean, I'm glad to see the director's on board and everything else. How much is the deficit? Is that, is that...
We are, right now, we have a $21,000 balance in our checking account, so not having...
Twenty-eight thousand, twenty-one thousand?
So...
Kelly, do you know, do you have any numbers of the visitors last summer? Were they in town, out of town? Being that this is the tourism season, would we, would we benefit, would we benefit from having the museum open on a regular basis?
Yeah, I think most of our visitors during the summer are from out of town.
Yep.
And that's why we have the number posted, is so that if somebody is coming through town and they stop there, the problem is that they usually want to go and break them.
Right, yeah.
And so luckily, fortunately, I work just on the other side of the block, so is Stephanie, one of our other board members, and Deb, and so whenever we can, we take time from our jobs to go give access. I think there's only been three times this summer where we weren't, like, we were unable to just drop what we were doing.
Sure, yeah.
But yeah, still having the hours available and having hours, previously our hours were 10 to 4, and I don't think that really fit very well with our school schedule and a lot of people's work schedules, so we wanted to try to extend more into the later afternoon.
Well, yeah, I think it's good that you have at least a part-time director and some hours.
Yeah, and we would like eventually to move her to a full-time position. We just want to make sure that, she is actually...
What color?
Yep, yep, this is Mandy, our board's new director.
Just another thought, have you ever talked to the senior center, asked the volunteers to go up and be open from 10 to 2, or whatever, whatever hours you want to use?
You know what?
They might be able to let her be interested.
Right, and now that we have somebody who, Mandy's, that would be the coordinator volunteers. And so, yes, we want to work with the senior center, we want to work with the high school and college so that we can, and I've had people come and say that they're interested, we just didn't have somebody there to be supervising what's going on and who's coming and going.
I'm on the senior center board and been on there a number of years, and there's some really nice people down there, and they're more willing to help volunteer.
That would be awesome.
A whole bunch of them are up there to do it, instead of sitting at home. And I think there's a whole bunch at home that's a little proud and you can give them help, too.
And you know, we have Dennis Lee, and this summer will be replacing that ramp, so we'll have a handicap accessible, a better accessible ramp, because right now it's not pretty. We'll have handicap parking in the rear part of the building, and then that's what the access will be. And then we have been doing partnerships with the Chitaco Board. We've been, we've been working with, we have a, we've been working with the North Dakota Arts Council, and then...
The library, the director of the library is now on our board as well, and we're, we're working with him to have a lot of, the suggestion from the North Dakota Arts Council was to have, like, outreach exhibits. So we have, for instance, we have the car. We could let Burke Stroud display the car so that the Heritage Center is more than just one place.
Yeah, so we've been...
And the library wants to have displays in the library that people can come see there.
There's a signed contract between the library and the Heritage Center to host an exhibit at the library that the Heritage Center will, you know, semi-regularly update. And so I think that's, that's a good tie that they pursue to try to find the synergies. The other thing that, just is probably worth mentioning, is is still the case that the, that the library and the Heritage Center share a janitorial service?
Yes.
So that was another thing that we pursued to try to cover costs after we lost the janitor, was to say, well, it's difficult to convince somebody to work a job that, you know, takes up so much time and doesn't really pay very well, and by combining it with the library, and I think that's worked out really well for both.
Then we also have the Maritime Museum. We're going to move some of their displays into the Heritage Center. Well, because we are staffed and because we're more handicap accessible, so that way people that want to keep those artifacts...
Who's in charge of the Maritime Museum and that kind of...
I've been in contact with Phil Rainström, and he's a gentleman that's out of Minnesota, but he has ties to the area, and so he's here very often.
He is here very often, okay.
Yeah, and I sat down and visited them. Actually, it caught me when I was here one day. We had a nice discussion about kind of what they're planning on doing. It sounded like it was the idea of me.
Talked to Kathy at the senior center, you know?
I don't know Kathy, but, okay.
Ask her. And Dennis Lee's going to do that, or not, I don't think, right?
No, we have, actually, it's sort of my, my special planning grant.
So we have a grant looking for it.
Yeah, so it's all, it's covered under, and it's been in the works for about two years now, so.
Was there more to that grant than just the ramp outside? Was there some sort of accessibility within, in the building itself, or?
The ground one, not it, I don't, it maybe is covering the opening, the door buttons to open to make those... They don't work very well, and you've mentioned that to me before, and those doors don't move very well.
Yeah, yeah.
But after, after this is done, the full main floor should be handicap accessible, obviously, at some point, I think.
Our bathrooms aren't really...
Because they're there, I mean, you've got that old sash door.
Yeah.
How much is that grant, one?
I believe the total cost for the project is around $65,000.
Dennis doesn't like to fix roofs. I know that.
He does, or do you...
Oh, he does.
Okay. Well, I, I can try and bring him up there.
I'll talk to him.
Okay.
So get him to look at that roof, and it's only a few thousand, and I'm sure we can...
Well, that, that and the damage that it's, it's done on the inside should be looked at as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, I mean, we might be...
Got to get that roof fixed. Got to get the roof fixed.
Yeah.
But I'd like to have somebody up there to look to see if we're not starting to look for structural damage, you know, because I don't have a trained eye to look and help, but...
Yeah, I think priority ones, that roof, if it's done, and we can work on the inside.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. It's always good to have love here. Okay. Kevin, you're up.
All right. First off, the state is putting together a bill, called a bill grant, for trying to get some federal dollars to work, to work on some of our larger bridges throughout the state. And we have, there's a program, one of the programs takes the low ton-rated bridges and tests them to see if they can carry more weight. And we have one bridge that qualifies for that, and the other program takes the larger bridges that are deficient and tries to get them into a program where they're replaced quickly, not necessarily a big bridge, or maybe a box culvert that's pre-cast, or like in our case, the bridge, a pre-modular bridge. So those two projects through this grant, and they were asking all the counties to write a letter in the support of this grant, so that's what this is about, is for the chairman to sign that letter for that grant, which isn't actually going to work yet, but that's what the letter is for.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to allow the chair to sign a letter for a bill grant. Further discussion? See, none. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
And as most of you are aware, with the metal fabrication for the bridge scaffold, it's going to cost us $4,133.82 from Gessner Ironworks. And he offered to buy back any steel that we didn't want to keep, which is going to bump to about $90,000.
You need more than that, David?
Yes, so much.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to contract with Gessner Ironworks to make the bridge scaffold.
Now, Kevin, at some point, you came to the commission and had this bridge replacement and a cost associated with it, and at that time, we gave you the go-ahead for that, and this still falls within that?
Yep, I had a $30,000 cushion, a dent created, crane rental, which is $20,000, so, yeah. Yes, we're still within that $30,000 cushion.
You know, so I still have issues with Kevin having to come with us to go ahead and order things that we've already really kind of approved. You know, it fits within that budget. It's not an overspenditure. You know, we need to get this done. You need to get that ordered. I don't think we need to approve everything as long as it's within your budget that we've already approved once, probably twice. You know, so, so go ahead, get the thing done, you know. I don't want to have to micromanage your department, you know, and I don't think anybody else here needs to either.
I think some of it just goes on now. This is how it was done in the past, so Kevin's discomfort with it that way, so he keeps doing it that way.
Yeah.
And, yeah, well, and Kevin emailed me on it, and I said, I was fine, I just go ahead and get it done, too. So, but he wanted to make sure that everyone's okay with it, which is reasonable.
You know, and the reason I didn't answer the email was, you know, it kind of borders on the gray line of open meeting violations.
I do realize that, yeah.
You know, if we're approving expenditure on email, that the public didn't...
Well, I was of the opinion, though, that we had already approved the expenditure, so that's why I was fine with saying go ahead. Because I was kind of of the same.
Like I said, like I said, it really borders on gray area of that, so...
I mean, is that, is that a procedure that we want to look at changing going forward? Sort of these small budget already, I mean, small ticket already budgeted items?
Well...
Well, but when something is over $1,000, though, you still have to get it through.
Nice point. See, and there again, and the state does that? Is that just for counties?
What's your question?
Because I know we, we go through the budget process for every department, we approve their budgets, and for them to come back and say, oh, I need to order this thing, or is it in your budget? Yeah, it's already in my budget. We approved that last, whatever, July, October. I don't, you know, if that's a requirement of the state, then they're meant to be in department and commission business. You know, because we have things within the school that, you know, oh, we ordered a vehicle, and we paid for a vehicle of $25,000. And, but that was already approved through the budget. So it's not approved two, three times again, and on its a $25,000 expenditure.
Well, it depends on, I suppose, wherever you're getting your bid price from, everything, too, the whole...
Well...
But they leave through all the minutes.
Didn't you guys discuss that last fall, in the month of, in state with the $1,000 limit, then you can't look at, open that up?
Look at, look at easier.
Yeah, it's, to me, it's, it's another step of micromanaging, and that doesn't need to be in place. You know, if we're, if we look at the budget that we approved and that is within the budget, you know, something that was asked for, you know, back in July, and October, and August, and whatever, and now all of a sudden, come April, that department goes on and purchases that item that we've already approved them to do in the budget cycle, it should be okay, you know, but...
But the information factor, you know, I kind of like the fact that, you know, we kind of know what's going on a little bit, because, you know, I don't talk to Kevin every day, and, you know, just to have the information. I mean, it's 10 minutes, five minutes of time just to get a little information of what's going on, kind of, you know. And I like the fact that, you know, he shows us what this is going to cost.
Well, would it, would it make a difference if it still comes in at $8,000? He's still under his budget, but he's now, it's $8,000, not $4,000. I don't think it's really micromanaging, because he's not really asking permission, so is he. He's just presenting this.
Yeah, I mean, I think I agree with both of you in different ways. The way I would agree with you, Jeff, is if it was something that was time-sensitive, which this is, right? And is there any, is there any sort of carve-out that we're aware of in the state to, like, if it's a time-sensitive project, just approve sort of the whole pass-through of the funding so that it doesn't have to keep coming out? Because, I mean, that can, that can extend a project months and months past when it could have reasonably been done by a private sector industry, right? Which not say that we need to operate that way, but only to say that we want to be as efficient, you know, with time and resources as possible.
I guess, I guess what it comes down to, to me, is, micromanagement, to me, is we're forcing the department has to do something. Kevin is bringing us this information of his own validity, I mean...
Right, but, but in the same sense, we just, we just made a motion to approve that expenditure. When we really didn't need to, then.
Well, it's over $1,000.
Because it's already been approved?
Well, yes and no. I don't, I agree, it's, it's complicated to approve, obviously.
Because, yes, I do love, like, the information. I think it's important, and it's, but to have to go through and approve that each and every time we make that, you know, have an expenditure, when it's already been approved through a budget process, or through a bid process, or through whatever, and then we, at some point in time, we go ahead and approve paying that bill. Right? You know, so when, when this bill comes in, we'll have to approve that again, you know, paying the bill, so... We're, we're very redundant, and if you like redundancy, it's, we've got it covered. With that, I'll call for the question. Will it start to be a pain in the...
No, you're fine. It's, it's, it's a, it's a good discussion to have, you know, how we do things or about the wrong thing.
Okay, question's been called. There was a motion in a second to approve the cost of the fabrication of the scaffolding and then also selling back steel we don't need. Well, if I vote by saying aye...
I did have one quick question. We had talked, you and I talked one day at Greenhouse, about that, that you were going to keep some of this metal. Is this price keeping any of it, or is that...
Well, that's, that's what the metal cost was.
Okay.
So it's 2,300 or 22,000 bucks just to build it, basically, in hours.
So if, if we were to sell some of it back, I mean, that would be a later date decision, obviously, but some of those costs could be recovered if we chose not to keep it?
Okay.
Yeah, but you were going to talk about maybe keeping some, some trailers and some other eyeball things.
What we think we can use in that.
And some of it might get wrecked, we don't know, so...
Depends on...
Hope not, but...
Okay. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
Yeah, I was going to say we should roll call that after I was looking at it.
My bad. Roll call this.
Wade Field?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Byton?
Aye. Motion carries.
And just for a side note, I have one other quote for that, for $13,625.
$13,000?
$10,000 was late.
Well, so, all right.
Well, so, way to save some money.
High five? Okay.
Okay, the bid, bid results for the Sons of Jacob Cemetery. Gowon Construction wants to donate the whole project.
Thank them.
Wow.
Yes, yeah. So that was a grant program, so I got to call into the grant folks to see how, what do we have to do to do that? But just so you know, Gowon Construction is donating the amounts to, well, the next load of bid was $1,400.
Well, if they go forward with that, I'd make a motion at this commission to write a letter of thanks to Gowon Construction.
And I'd like to, you know, work with Kevin and Gowon and probably come up with some sort of press release for that. You know, I think that's a very nice gesture.
Yeah, I think Mike Connor would be a part of that.
And Mike would like to...
Yeah, I'm sure Mike would be a part of that.
Okay, so we have a motion that if this works and Gowon's able to donate, that we write a thank you.
Yep.
We can have a second. We'll take yours in second, Jeff. We have a motion in a second. Further discussion? See, none. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. This is what we, we talked about last year. This is the first load of the gravel they're putting in on it.
Yep.
Okay, because that was already, last summer, we talked about the grant, so...
It turns out, we go through the whole bid process for the grant, so...
Because it was, it was late last year that the grant was approved, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was past construction. Yeah, we talked about it last summer, when we put the grant in, when we supported the grant.
Okay, we started fixing the sand spots on Route 4C, we call it, and Route 6, and we're grinding in this cement, and to do those two roads, the cement is going to cost $4,500. So I'd like a motion to that.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the...
We have a motion in a second to approve the bind of Portland cement to fix four, Ramsey four and Ramsey six. Further discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Brett?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Byke?
Aye. Motion carries. Have you started working on that yet or?
Yep, we should finish this week, so.
Okay. We'll have to, we'll have to tell us where the spots are so we can go and take a look at them and see how they work out and hold up.
They got a little bit of fresh ground on top of them, so they go north and south.
Ramsey four, is that south of two?
No, it's north, let's see, north and south of, at the end of seven, it turns, it goes from pavement to gravel.
Okay, yep.
Corner of seven all the way up until eight, right?
Yep.
In that section, there's about, what, three spots in there probably?
I think we did about ten.
Ten?
Some were big, some were small.
Yeah, there's a couple of spots up north.
I was calling last fall and I didn't want to go on that.
Yeah, there's probably more like fifteen, so.
Yeah, after the rains at Ramsey four going south on, south of two is that?
That was gravel last year, so.
Motor coach acceptable?
Oh, good question.
Or we're gonna need somebody to pull us up tomorrow, cause what Jeff's asked.
If it's a three day soaker, no.
Well, we have our tour tomorrow and we're, and that was.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, we're, we're heading east on Ramsey two and then going south and then continuing on south up to that Jerusalem Cooley. Should be fine. There was a couple of soft spots in there, but I thought it'd be okay. But I haven't been down there since after our rains last week, so. It was raining what, Thursday night, Friday, and then some Saturday, Sunday morning. So, you know.
Wasn't a lot.
No, no, it didn't, didn't appear to be a lot, so okay.
Are, are there any other county roads gravel wise that you're looking at doing soft spots on in addition to these or is this?
Time wise, if we get time, we're gonna do seven also.
Okay, yeah, cause I've had some people talk to me about seven, that it would be nice if they could get some of those spots down on that, so.
And there's two really bad spots, south and west, east of Pan. But there's just two spots.
On two there?
Yes.
South and east of Pan?
Yeah. I've driven down there for a long time, should probably grab that. I drove nine last night and that was in pretty good shape overall, just a couple of spots.
So there's, there's plenty of them, it's just our schedule works out. Next week could be starting bridge work, so. But we can still do these soft spots in the fall, so.
Yeah, after bridge work is done. Okay, then it'll be another week's time to see how those other spots hold up and how it works as well, so. Okay, very good. Okay, on to the next one.
Uh, estimates to do base stabilization on the truck road. Just kind of preliminary numbers for now, but if we decide to do all six inches, it's gonna be like fifty-five thousand dollars. Now, the contract, people that sell the product recommend at least doing four inches, which would cut it down to thirty-five thousand three hundred.
So it, it's not just a spray like the mag water would be, it's.
No, we have them.
That's mixed in?
Yep, we pull it all loose and then repack it all.
So this was something we were planning on doing or?
It came up after budget time, so we needed to discuss it and see if it was in the budget. And it wasn't a project, we're gonna do.
Well, and I, and I think at the time of the discussion, we, we didn't think that we'd, you know, we were throwing out, you know, six, ten thousand dollars somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
And this is obviously quite a bit more.
And with respect to choosing between four to six inches, I mean, is there a significant difference in the life, you know, lasting life of the?
You know, not really, I hadn't thought about this, when you drive out there, it's just like the top two inches that are falling apart. Everything underneath there is solid, there may be two soft spots in the whole three and a half miles. So that makes me think that everything underneath there is hard. So it might be foolish to go too deep since it's already hard.
Sure. I mean, I just, I wouldn't wanna do four inches and four inches lasts five years, you know.
Right.
You know, it doesn't last five years as long as six inches is all, so that's interesting to hear.
Kevin, do you have the, off the top of your head, the traffic numbers up there?
Oh, it should be on.
Yeah, I, I don't have that with me.
Truck load is eighty, yeah, yeah.
None of this is from fourteen.
Two years ago was eighty, two thousand ten was eighty-seven, two thousand six was a hundred sixty-eight. Must've been harvest month or something. So, so you have eighty and a hundred?
A day.
A day.
Yeah.
I would expect it to be more.
Yeah.
I guess it's probably a little bit higher than that, but I mean, it's also, you know, half the trips in are loaded and half the trips, trips out are unloaded, more than likely, so.
Yeah, the traffic's increased, I mean, if it worked on railroad bridge, Kevin?
Not a lot.
Not a lot.
No.
Truck traffic, no.
Yeah, well, yes, for sure, I mean, anybody that's trying to go east is definitely go, or west, is definitely going that way.
Going that way.
Yeah. All the fertilizer that's coming from the elevator and trying to go north.
Yeah.
And all the grain that's coming down, so in the planting season and harvest season, I'm sure there's a significant increase over that eighty.
Sees a lot of truck traffic there.
Yeah.
When we did the design for that realignment, we looked at how much traffic we anticipated would go through there if the, right, if the truck shut down. And it was like two hundred and thirty trucks a day, whatever, I figured we'd see. Maybe we shut that down for a month here, pretty soon.
Well, they will shut us down, yeah. For a month?
I think they have three days to, if they can shut it down completely, to redo the street underneath the.
Hello?
Yeah.
For a month?
Well, they'll take that, cause they have an underground word, can't let.
Do I?
Yeah. That, that'll be after their retaining walls are all done, though that's gonna be a little while.
Are they laying concrete down underneath or are they putting asphalt down?
Concrete.
So they're gonna dig everything?
Tie ends at the ends.
Okay, well, they're gonna dig everything all then, and that's gonna take some time, and it's worth, hopefully, we get dry enough.
Yeah. We're doing the side load made business.
I'll send it over and over.
You know, plenty of traffic going on, down there.
I'm just kidding.
What do you think you do here, Kevin?
There's twelve inches of base on there now, class thirteen.
Well, when I, when I talked to Greg close about an estimate for what it would cost, you know, it has to be picked up and watered and packed and watered and packed. Laid to the right slope and everything. So I figured we have a contractor do that and he suggested just getting a water truck on, when the top two inches got bad and go out there and water and pack it with that. I don't know, you know, it's, it's all, sounds good, but trying to find the time to do it is, is, you know, the problem, but.
Would, uh, would that eliminate some of the maintenance requirements out there?
Yeah, that's a thought.
So would there be a save, cost savings there or?
But, you know, it's.
It, it's not significant, you know. I'm just trying to find a way to justify.
I agree, yeah, because it, there'd be cost savings out in that section of road, but the person running the maintainer, the maintainer's still gonna go in someplace.
And I talked to Greg about that too, you know, we charge a hundred and twenty dollars an hour and it maybe takes him at the very most three hours and, you know, once, once a week is three hours, so like.
Yeah.
Three hundred and fifty dollars a week, you know, so that's a lot of weeks.
What did it cost the county when we did that project, you're a few years back?
The whole project?
The whole project.
It was almost a million, not quite.
Not quite a million.
Yeah, I think it was in there.
And, and how much do you think it would benefit by having this fifty-five thousand dollar budget done? Would it save the road?
It would save a lot of bleeding, it'd save a lot of phone calls. We may still have a soft spot, it's two show up.
Yeah.
We still may have a pothole or two show up, but they won't be really huge, it'll be the smaller potholes.
But you, has it gotten pretty washed for you?
Depends on the weather, it's not bad today, it's even dry.
In spots here, it is.
Yeah, around the curve and the, and each end, you know.
Well, that's, that's where you'd expect it, that's where you're breaking where.
Yeah.
It's pretty good, pretty washed with.
But I have seen at times when it's solid, so.
Well, you know, but overall, I think it's in, in pretty decent condition, I drive it three, four times a week and, and, you know, it's, it's really not, you know, as far as a gravel road's concerned, it, it's in pretty good condition. You know, and I don't have a problem, you know, driving opposed to the speed limit kinda thing and, but.
Yeah, we've never done a base stabilization like this, we've never tried this, so this is kind of a new, let's see how this'll work.
Real township did that, route, road to south of.
Yeah.
While I drive it. I don't know what happened, or they put gravel on it two years later, which, of course, that, whatever they put on wasn't treated.
Sure.
And it went right back to what it was.
I mean, I, not that fifty-five thousand dollars isn't anything, but I'd like to see how it works, more than anything.
Yeah, that road got harder than a rock out there, did.
Did, didn't it?
Yep.
I remember that. Now they put gravel on it?
Twice.
I haven't been on it.
Twice or something.
I remember when they did it, I was like, wow. But that's what they did, huh?
Yeah, that was a few years ago.
And you have placed something like that here, similar to the.
Yeah, that's what we do, it makes it just harder to rock, yeah.
But again, I mean, if, if you get away with four inches, I mean, at that price, it's all, it's a little over half the cost.
I would be more into doing four inches than six, yeah.
And it sounds like that's reasonable considering, like you said, it's the two inches on top are loose, we don't wanna, I mean, you dig it up too much, which you're almost like you're.
You're building a road.
You know, it's counterintuitive, I mean, if, if you got a good base underneath there, why would you dig up more than you have to?
How much did they put on, you know?
Um, they did about a mile's worth, it's not quite a mile there, but it was about six thousand dollars worth of chemical. And I think we helped them with the packing at the time, so.
But they don't get the heavy truck, trucking like this road down?
I think they only did two or three inches. Maybe two.
Close that four inches, wouldn't work?
His thought was the road is hard now. It really seems foolish to disturb what's hard already. Which I guess is a good point, but his point was to go make the top two inches hard when it got loose and. The only problem with that is those top two inches, the dust keeps flying away and flying away, and that's what makes it hard, is the dust.
How's it, would it hold the dust though?
More clay.
More clay?
Mag chloride. Mag would help, but it's, I mean, the thing with mag chloride is you gotta do it every year, so you got that seven thousand dollars per mile cost every year, where this is a, this will probably last you five years easily.
So you can do thirty-five thousand dollars for a five year deal and not have to do the twenty-one thousand for the mag water.
Plus a little less con spend plating and all that.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would feel comfortable in trying it out with four inches, see if that works.
It's, you know, it's, if you look at it like, the product we're talking about is sold as a base stabilizer, where mag chloride is sold as a dust suppressant, it's not sold as a base stabilizer, it's sold as a dust suppressant.
Yeah.
It works, don't get me wrong, but.
Yeah, it does work, but it's, it would be expensive to do it every year, you know, in three and a half miles, you know, a little over twenty-one thousand dollars, you know, or twenty-four thousand dollars for what the cost would be, so. You know, do you have any budget?
I'll go look, I think I do.
For thirty-five?
Yep.
I just like the idea of trying it because if it works and we know it works well, that could be an option in a lot of other places in the county on county roads, where maybe we have a long stretch where that's cement, for a small spot, soft spot wouldn't necessarily work, but something like this could probably be cool as well.
Yeah.
You know, cause, you know, there's spots on, you know, like seven and four and six.
Well, all those turnback roads, you know.
I mean, I, if, if this is something that would work, it would be something we could invest in a little bit and it would be, could help right a bit on some of these roads out there. That, you know, obviously the townships aren't of the capability of paying for something like this probably, but if, if they're, you know, some of these township roads in the back, they're being bad.
One thing they stress on this is they gotta have plenty of clay.
I think they have an option for the townships to do something like this.
Yeah.
Or the spots, if you know you have bad spots, you know.
I guess I think we could try. Kevin's all right.
Yeah, I would like to try them all. I, I followed around in some of the other counties too, and they all like it.
They do.
Except for when a pothole shows up, they're hard to repair, cause you gotta dig the whole area around it to mix all that fresh stuff in with the, it's an enzyme, it's a bug that goes down there and reacts with the clay.
You know, it works, it works. Going out and reacting like poop or something.
Very important to have that road ground properly.
Yep, and that's part of when, when he relays it, the four inches of gravel, when he relays it, we wanna get it right, that's.
And how long of our time period does it take to, to do it on the road, would there be like a big?
I would say a week long, the weather cooperated.
And?
Not even.
And is it something that we did before harvest season?
I would have talked with the contractor.
Yeah, before, you know, you like this, you don't wanna all of a sudden have a, some sort of road closure right in the middle of harvest, you know.
Well, that I think we'll have to work around, find out when they're gonna close the underpass.
Right, right.
Cause we don't wanna close that off, cause then truck traffic has, you know, less options. Still have to work with them a little bit and see when we can make it, make it happen. Quite out of a tight window.
One more question, Kevin, could give us a rough estimate on what your cost of paving these three and a half miles?
I think we have that.
Yeah, it's probably.
Fifty million a mile?
Yeah, no.
Well, we had to put down, we had to put down more base.
Yeah.
Right, cause we didn't put all the class thirteen down, we needed to, so we're gonna have to put more class thirteen down, another what, four inches or something like that? Six?
Yeah, I think it was five on fifteen, but we were gonna lose a couple, so it'd be five inches of gravel and five inches of asphalt to make it what the pavement was that was.
Yeah, five inches asphalt, what, right, eighty thousand inch per mile?
When you hear this figure, then I'm thirty-five thousand.
Well, and, and that's kinda my point in kinda testing to see how this works because, I mean, I, I think a lot of people would like to see pavement on something like that, but I mean, I just don't know if it's justifiable just because of the expense. So we have to look at other options that are cost effective, so we don't break ourselves basically. And if it works and it's a once every five years thing, it's a lot better than doing nothing if it works and that, if we can't afford to do anything else. I mean, cause that truck route was all done with, was that oil money?
Yeah, it's size match, yeah.
So we don't know if oil money's ever coming back.
I'll make a motion.
To go what, four inches or?
Four.
Okay.
Thirty-five dollars.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, those are rough estimates, but we're really cool.
No, we're, we're giving you the ability to go look at the four inches, get the bid ready back.
I, I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to allow Kevin to go, uh, do four inches of base stabilization on the truck route. Further discussion.
And when you come back with that, will, will we know what the timeline for the city is and you can let us know?
Yeah, for sure on the city, you know, try and bid down a contractor.
And being we're not spending any money on these things, we'll, we'll have some. All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
Yes, Kevin.
Thanks Kevin. Anything else? That's all you got, huh?
And you'll continue working with, with Kelly on that air and center as well?
Yeah, I'll help her as much as she wants, we know.
I would, I mean, to, to jump in on that, I was really concerned about what I heard this morning about the rains that happened. I mean, it, it sounded bad, the stuff starting to bubble and.
Yeah, we, we gotta get that thing there, stay safe.
It's about a year, a whole year.
Yeah.
Have you heard from some of the townships on their roads or what kinda, you know, like I said, I've driven some of the backwards coming into town here and they're in pretty tough shape.
I was on quite a few today and they're actually starting to heal up.
Yeah. I was gonna ask the question of, and I had the question asked to me, on all of our new blades on the John Deere's and the cats, does it have like a, do, do the operators get to change the pitch on the, on the crowning or does that have like an automatic pitch in it that adjusts for it or, just out of curiosity?
They can change it or they can set the machine to do it.
Okay, cause I, I'd had some questions about that, cause there was some people that were kinda concerned about, seemed like the roads were awful flat, like a crown would help a little bit.
Yeah, and the next one was, that too much ground.
Yeah, I, I realize that.
But I, I get it.
Every mile of road is different.
Yeah, and I didn't ask the question.
Depends on the loser, yeah.
Right, I.
Every quarter mile could be.
I just was curious, cause I never asked you that question, but if it's, you know, cause they always say what, four percent grade or something like that?
I would do the truck number five.
Yeah.
Quarter.
Yeah, that's optimal.
Quarter five.
To shed water. Interesting. Okay, thanks Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay. On to new business, approval of the liquor licenses.
Moved to approve.
We have a motion approved, what do you wanna take the second then? Motion, second. Okay, and and just so I can see what we have, your heads for, what we have, uh, ten of them, eleven? Okay, level.
Wait, let's do, we already did the last thing.
Okay, let's just, we have ten now. My only question was when I was looking at it, uh, and granted, I should know this completely, but what's the difference between the six hundred dollars and the two hundred dollars? Cause everyone's six hundred except for the one. So, just because it's.
It's in century code.
It's in century code, but a country club is cheaper, oh, interesting.
They don't sell off sale, do they?
Huh?
They don't sell off sale. So that might be part of that too, then. Well, I was just kinda curious, I saw it, and and I understood why the camp rafting is a dollar, because.
Is that motion?
That makes sense, but I was just looking at one of the differences.
Are they, are they open year round, contract book? Or is it just?
No, and maybe it's a partial, you think, absolutely.
That could be.
I didn't know that. Cause we set the prices in our ordinance, correct? Yeah, so I just, I was looking, I'm just kinda curious. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the ten liquor licenses, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign, motion carries. Approval of the site authorization, we have. Just one. Uh, still mobile club at the left of our, with electronic volt tabs.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the site authorization, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign. Motion carries. Okay, approval of special permits, we have two of them in front of us.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the two special permits, uh, for certain liquor. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign, motion carries. Library board appointment.
Community representation.
Lucas, you got it? Okay, you want that one?
Sure.
That sounds like a yes to me, somebody make a.
So moved. Thank you, Lucas.
Yeah, thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign, motion carries. So that's commission appointment, or is that county appointment? Cause we have, do we have two people that we have approved? This is for the commissioner, that's what I was, cause I, we had to flip that, cause you were on the library board previously.
Which I think is why it's now.
Yeah, that's why it's up now, I'm just double checking.
Right, that's right, yeah, you converted me.
So who's from the county, who did we approve from the county as a whole then?
Uh, Sawyer Desa.
Okay, there you go, that's right, okay, very good, thank you. Okay, pre-application, approval of pre-application for a C V G grant for the front entrance of the L E C, and I see Rob is here, so I guess he would like to speak to that.
I was just in case there was any questions, um, basically what we're looking for is just sponsorship from the commission, from the county for the grant application. Uh, we're looking to get the front entrance of L E C redone, so it's handicap accessible.
And there's no cost, we just have to.
I think we, it might be like, our cost says L E C would be around four thousand dollars, maybe.
But it's gonna come out of the L E C budget, we just have to be the sponsoring agency, basically.
Exactly.
What what's the total cost of the project, just a curiosity?
Uh, it was right around forty thousand.
I liked your grant, I liked your grant too, I read that in there where it said, how long has this been an issue since nineteen seventy three?
We're we're learning a lot more through this, so, yeah.
What's that?
What's this one at the office for, twenty two?
It's twenty two plus the bulletproof, bulletproof glass is another fifteen thousand or something like that.
I moved to approve.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the application, or the pre-application, excuse me, for the community development block grant for the L E C, further discussion.
It's not all approved now?
No, we have nothing bulletproof in there.
Yeah, that, just taking it ADA accessible is a big positive, obviously.
I- i- isn't the, uh, where you talk to the, no, that's not a.
No, not the, the glass, the glass goes into the different offices.
But but the, the glass that you talk and and P D R finds, that that's not a, your Jesus seems thick enough.
If it's supposed to look like.
You know, my my mom used to work there, and she said one of her, one of the nights she was there, someone came in, had a, had a weapon. So I think at that time she thought it was bulletproof.
Hey, don't tell, don't tell, don't tell anybody.
Oh, hell no.
This is on tape. Okay, uh, further discussion on the approval of the block. Sponsoring, I should say. Seeing no further questions, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign, motion carries, thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks.
One question. Shane told me it's gonna take a year to get this done, no?
No, I won't, sorry, I take that long, but it, uh, to get the grant, we may, we may not get any, realize the grant. Uh, being awarded to us until towards the end of the year ago, so this is the early process of getting that grant application done, we just have to be sponsored.
Yeah, and you have like a, what a September one start date or something like that, cause you figure it's gonna take a while to get the grant.
Throw me a sad story that one of your commissioners is is in a wheelchair, he's really causing a lot of hardship. By not not having a reasonable access.
Yeah, he wants to come over and talk to the chair, come on.
If you really wanted to go down that road, you could say there's actually two disabled.
There's no, there's no automatic doors on the.
Oh, really?
No, so you got two really heavy door, and with a big.
Yeah, those are heavy doors too.
And that's, that's the reason I never brought anybody cookies, cause you know, I can't get the door, I can't carry the cookies, right?
I think that's a, that's gonna be a good improvement, so.
It will be, I'm gonna move ahead.
Okay, uh, the last thing was what I added, and let me open it up here to start to read to you real quick. Uh, we got an email about, oh my gosh, three weeks ago, okay. In late June, uh, the N D C C A president, uh, Rayner Hawk is going to be appointing county commissioners to serve on the standing committees. Um, we need to have, if we have any commissioners interested in serving, complete return the attached forms of, uh, no later than Tuesday, the twenty sixth. So this was the last time we would, we would have work on or to put names in. Uh, there's resolutions committee, which will begin work in July this year, most other committees will follow in August. Um, and there's, let me look here at the standing committees, so there's the audit committee, the nominating committee, the resolutions committee, and the legislative committee. Uh, last year I served on the legislative committee and I believe.
I was on the, yeah.
Lucas served on the resolutions committee. The nominating resolutions and audit obviously are all for the annual meeting, the legislative committee, uh, meets during the legislative session and gives the staff, um.
Priorities?
Yeah, basically, not necessarily, the priorities are established in October, but basically gives them direction when there's a question, when something comes up, should they kinda, you know. Go in on it or not go in on it, you know, just additional feedback basically from help to help the counties. And I I found that very valuable, if it was o- okay with everyone here, I'd like to go back or attempt to get back on that again, I found it very, very valuable. And it's it's a conference call once a week, which usually wasn't too bad.
Do you need a motion to add it back then?
Uh, we, I, I don't know, I would guess that we probably could best do it, or do we wanna just? Uh, legislative committees at the bottom here, so we have audit, nominating, resolutions, legislative, and then. Uh, yeah, then the other one is just made up of the N D C C A board directors.
Are you both, uh, willing to just stay on the committees that you're on, or?
Would you like to add again?
Sure.
And the resolutions, you know, obviously that kinda helps set some of the legislative priorities for, for for the nineteen session, so that's obviously very important as well.
Yeah, it was a very, very interesting discussion when we were down there, you know, talking about what we wanted to present as a, our recommendations.
And how many times did you meet, just?
Just, just the ones down there, but but there were conversations back and forth.
Yeah, and and that legislative committee, there's one kickoff meeting, probably like December-ish, I would guess, or November-ish, and then it's weekly calls out.
Yeah, cause, cause what they wanted to do, you could, you could present, you know, a resolution at any time on any of the calls, or at the actual meeting itself. They wanted to try to get you to do it before the meeting itself, so that they could distribute kind of what it was to everyone, uh, in that way. Uh, but to be honest with you, I was so new to the commission, at that time I didn't even really know what proper resolutions were, aside with mostly just a listening session, but I did find it beneficial.
Yeah, but and but I, and that's why I like the legislative committee, simply because, you know, as a county of our size, and with all the things that are going on, social services, everything else, it's really good to have in here. As to what's going on week to week to keep us informed, and that's kinda what my role is, is to get information, bring it back to the committee, the commission as a whole, so we know what's going on.
I'll make a motion to add it back, if you wanna stay on.
Okay.
Is there any other?
Yeah, what, anybody else, yeah, there's, there's the. Well, there's the audit committee as well as the nominating committee, uh. If anybody else would like to sit on one of those, or if anybody else wants to be on one of the other ones that we already.
What's the nominating committee?
Uh, the committee prepares a slate of candidates for pres- president, vice president, treasurer, and two or three vacant directed positions on the board, depending on the year. They also nominate, uh, any C O, uh, what's this one, western region and under board candidates. As those positions become vacant, their business is normally conducted by conference call prior to the annual conference, and a minimum of one meeting during the conference. That would be nominating, audit obviously looks over the, has a short meeting the opening day of the conference, and they'll. Overview the financial records of the previous year for the association. I would guess it'd be N D C C A, yeah, not the N D A, not, not N D A C O. Any else interested? No, like odds, come on, that's fun. That's probably the one they gotta pull people, people, not the audit committee. Okay, uh, nobody else is interested, then we have a motion to put in my name for legislative committee and Lucas's name for the resolutions committee, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign, motion carries, thank you. Uh, that came from, um, and that didn't come from Terry, it came from Michelle Creek. Average, oh, we saved me a month, sorry.
Tabor.
Tabor, yeah, I thought it was Tabor. That came May twenty fifth. I'm lucky, I just remembered yesterday when I was looking through stuff, so. Okay, uh, visitors and delegations. Cricket. Okay, announcements, does anybody have any fun announcements?
Well, as long as we have Rob here, do you need a detailed update on the jail, or just how the D O C is going?
Uh, so we have the D O C, uh, Mr. Werninger was in, oh, I'm not gonna think of the days, but it's been a couple of weeks ago now. Uh, spent a few days with us, uh, worked really closely with Dan Kraft, uh, in the jail, uh, really gave a lot of good feedback and direction. Uh, I really think we, think we gained quite a bit of momentum with him being there, uh, Dan's really continued to work hard. Uh, and has stayed in contact with Mr. Werninger pretty consistently over the last couple of weeks. Um, some of the changes that we've, that we've been making, uh, haven't necessarily been received well by others, cause it's a lot of still just, uh, getting rid of. A lot of the responsibilities law enforcement center took on over the years, uh, that should be on other agencies. Um, but we're, we're making really good progress in the jail right now, uh, we're expecting to see Bob back. Uh, I would see, expect to see him the first week of July, but the second week of July is probably when he'll be back for a second round in three or four days. Um, which at that time, he's just gonna kinda come in and take a look and see what we've done to that point, and then maybe give us some more direction. Uh, beyond that, to get out, out from underneath this border that we're on, um. Everything else is stabilized for the most part, uh, we're seeing a little bit of regression in reentry right now after moving down out of that spot. Uh, we fill the operations manager position over there, uh, with Alicia Maharo, uh, but she doesn't have much for experience. The first couple of weeks with her in that position, I think we've got a good person in that role, it's just gonna take a long time for her to get up to speed. On how reentry just works, um. But it's just plugging away, a lot to do, uh, and keep, keep driving, that's all we can do over there, so. It's, the admin team that I've got, uh, has done a ton of work, uh, you know, from Peggy and Jim. And the admin offices to Dan stepping up and really, uh, starting to pull corrections along. Uh, it's, it's unfortunate to have the people that I have working with me, you know, Star, not having to worry about dispatch whatsoever, because Star is, you know, knows what she's doing over there, so. And I'll, it's, we'll continue to make progress. If anyone knows of any people looking for jobs though, you can maybe help me find a deeper labor pool, but we're, we're desperate for reentry staff right now, so.
Minimum requirements look like?
G D and a valid driver's license.
Thanks, Josh.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for looking. Any further announcements?
Yes, I might add, one, the fishing event, the boundaries event, fishing event on its Spirit Lake Casino is about a month away, uh, July fourteenth and fifteenth. And we've got sixty three people signed up, and we're gonna cap it at fifty, so if anybody knows anybody with a boat that wants to spend a couple of days on the lake with us, it's very pretty.
Sorry, I was supposed to be.
Celebrating, right?
Yeah, I'll pay for, pay my five bucks.
There you go. So we need boats, five people, if you know anybody with a boat, don't.
How, how many people do you put on a boat generally?
Uh, one or two depending, uh, some of the pontoons get as many as probably three, but because they have an attendant with them, that takes care of their needs. So basically, you're just gonna get them on the water.
So what are the dates?
Uh, July fourteenth and fifteenth.
I'd be happy to donate a boat, but I don't know that I can donate my time then, so, I don't know if that helps.
It may, we, you have, have you do that before?
So what are the, what are the hours that you're out on the water?
Uh, they, we start, train them on the water by nine on Saturday, and then they come in back in for lunch, and then they go back out, uh, in the afternoon until. I think four or five.
Okay.
And then Sunday, um, maybe get out a little earlier, close between eight and nine.
Okay.
And then, um, they're in for a fish fry casino, but they put on at one. Yeah, so just a half day Sunday.
And I, and I may actually be around those days now that I think about it, um, I'll get back to you on that, yeah, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be out like that.
And not everybody's.
You jump onto, and then you can go, oh, I want that.
Well, I've got my boat, how can I, how can I do two boats, especially with one hand, jeez, believe it.
Well, we have, you know, some other help too, they can come on a boat with, they help tie lines and that kinda stuff too.
Oh, that, that I'm no, no good at.
At that point, you may as well just give the whole boat to somebody else.
Yeah, not a most proficient beginner. Uh, announcement wise, is that all you have?
Yeah, yeah, all right, appreciate it.
We had, yeah, of course, we had social services meeting last night, just for update, uh, uh, the state funding formula. Uh, we didn't have a regression in case load or anything, we pretty much did studies, we got funded the same amount for the second half of the year as the first half, which always. They do the re-up on July one, but they kinda give you a heads up a little earlier, and we knew what we were probably gonna be okay, so, everything went good there. Uh, you know, case load's been pretty much steady, had a little bit of staff turnover, but, uh, we're all pretty steady there too. Just, you know, we know any person here and there that you're actually hiring, so that's pretty common with a staff of that size, other than that, everything seems to be going well. I think that's all I got right now.
I've, I've been gone, so the only thing that I have to add is, uh, and I don't know if we're ready to release to the public yet, so I won't go further than to mention it. Um, the Strategic Planning and Steering Committee for Downtown, that was put together by the Chamber. Uh, has received its, the sort of finalized strategic vision document from, uh.
Jonathan.
Jonathan, and so that, uh, we got a couple of days ago, had a chance to read over it, I think it's, it's a lot of good stuff. Uh, and will be very helpful to the community, but I just wanted to let you know that there's been forward progress, and I think we're gonna probably need to meet to approve. Releasing a public number, I'm really sure how Paula wants to handle that.
We, uh, and we met as a chamber board on Monday, and, and received the, the same information. And, and I'm thinking they're gonna, uh, have a meeting, I wanna say August maybe. And they're looking at having two, two public meetings, um, and they're, they're gonna utilize. Probably the memorial building for that, um, cause they wanted to have a downtown, um, for that, but I'm not sure on the dates. But they did say August, um, and so that would work with, uh, the floor renovation, the floor, uh, the project that Roger does. And, uh, in the memorial building, and during July that it's closed, so, um.
And I, I hope I'm not overstepping here, cause I, I only heard this here, say this part of it, but I, is Paula intending to try to get someone from the governor's office? To be there to represent major initiatives as well?
Yeah. You know, and, and everything's obviously very preliminary, right, of the, you know, as far as the meetings and the meeting dates and who's gonna be involved. But it will be open to the public, and it's gonna be public, uh, type of, yeah, so. And with that, you know, the, the Chamber, we met on Monday, and, and their big fishing tournament is. Yeah, so, and with that, you know, the, the Chamber, we met on Monday and, and their big fishing tournament is this weekend, uh, Friday, Saturday, uh, extra day on Sunday if needed for bad weather. Uh, that Monday's meeting, they had, I think, ninety-six teams, they have a cap of like, I think, a hundred and twenty, so they're hoping to fill that in. Um, and they have a lot of really great prizes, and Chamber members are encouraged to, the Chamber board members are encouraged to come on and help when they can. I think there's a few of them that are out on boats as spotters and, you know, helping with weight and different things like that, so. Uh, and then they do have their rig fest crazy days, uh, scheduled for July fourteenth.
Oh, and, and on that note, I actually have another sort of update about the crazy days, uh, tonight, I think maybe already going on, when I'm looking at the clock. Um, the Downtown Alliance is, is doing a cleanup of the alleyways.
Give you a little alley alive type stuff or what?
Well, I, I know that, uh, that Cindy, sit there from group fifty-four, uh, really wants to start having some more things open in the back alley, I think, uh, at some point she wants to, if she has not already approached the city, to see if she can do a little bit of outdoor, you know, she, she has, she has wine service to do that outside of, but, you know, sort of cordoned off area in the alleyway. Get somebody to open there.
And, uh, we have our joint board water tour along with the water education foundation, uh, our water tours tomorrow morning, we're leaving the word registering in the back of the courthouse at eight, we've been at eight-thirty, uh, bus is full, if anybody wants to ride along, I have some space in my van, so. We have the munch up in East Bay Resort, uh, Odessa Event Center, Bill Wood, Bill and Bill Wood's place out there, and it's catered by, uh, the Wayhouse Cafe, and so. And it's a full day of, of touring the Devil's Lake infrastructure, whether it be protection on the east end, success stories out in the Michigan's Bill Wade Project, Wade Loretta, McHughes Flu area out there. And then, uh, on a side note, uh, the Devil's Lake Firebird Play Target League is state champs, so. Yeah, we, and we competed on Sunday against twelve other schools and five hundred other competitors, and Devil's Lake came on top by one point. So. A lot of clay shot, a lot of shell shot, and, and when it's all done, you're one point ahead of your next competitor. Really impressive shooting in some very difficult, uh, wind conditions by all the competitors, so it was, uh, and, you know, this isn't sunburn, it's wind burn on the face, cause we were looking right into the blowing, blowing, uh, north end, so it was, uh, it wa- it was a good day, it was a lot of fun. So, and I expect somebody's got some stuff to Louise, they were supposed to anyway, i- if not, see me about a picture and, you know, you know, steal it from my Facebook page, you know, grab one and, and go, cause I think that was what Carson was planning on doing for his tour.
Carson did, yeah.
Yeah.
And someone sent me a bigger picture.
Eh, a bigger picture, good, so, you know, it's, uh, it's something that the kids work hard on and a lot of, a lot of dedication and time from the coaches, and we start and I start the first week of April, I think we were delayed a week or a week and a half, uh, on having practice because of snow, I think that was statewide though. So, uh, and we weren't the only ones, but, uh, it was a, I don't know, a lot of cold, cold evenings, afternoons, and two extreme heat. You know, uh, sunburn and, and, uh, hot temperatures, but it was a lot of fun on Sunday, so we had twenty-eight, uh, Devil's Lake competitors competing down there and and, uh, we had a second place high, high female, uh, Marta Wang took, uh, took the second place honors and the high female individual, and then our team took, uh, team championship, so, and congratulations to our Devil's Lake kids.
Do you wanna give an update, cause I wasn't there for the home rule meetings?
Not, not, uh, not a lot of people attended, it was likely attended, but the people that, uh, did attend, we got some good feedback. It seemed as though, um, overall, um, I think the draft document we have right now was kind of in a pretty good place, at least of the feedback I've gotten from people that have looked at it. They like some of the provisions that are in there on, uh, the possibility of doing any kind of additional taxation where it's limited and it's very scoped down to where things have to be done a certain way. Overall, I think it was pretty good feedback, but, uh, you know, we're, still gonna have to do a little bit of work on it and then grow public carry, so, that's basically right, we're really mad with it.
Yeah, nice quarterbacking, I thought.
Yeah, we'll have to talk about that afterwards, we'll have to set the next meeting, I didn't want to do that at the, at the last one, so. Okay, anything else? Seeing nothing. Any change in motion is it?
So.